Good morning, y'all.
Good morning, y'all.
We have a very active today for the course of the afternoon business. We got Peggy and John here, but we'll get along.
I'll get them.
We got no worries.
Good morning.
We have to change the agenda a little bit. We have additions. We need to add, amend the agenda to include PEG estimate number four, the Woodworth Construction for LEC work completed for one month. We don't have the numbers.
One forty-one, six ninety-two, fifty.
Okay. Everybody got that? PEG estimate number four, the Woodworth Evans for LEC remodel work complete. And we'll go to straps and nine o'clock close session. We do not have anything for close session.
I'd rather not. I'd scratch the one forty-one, six ninety-two.
Yeah.
That's just a usual payment. You know, you get paid engineer certified if there's much more money or they should get this.
And things like that.
I'm trying to figure out if you got me. That's not all changed orders.
Well, okay, we're done. Do I have a motion of approval? Motion by Bruce?
Second.
Okay. Second by Rick to approve the amendment on October fifth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried. We have minutes from October fifth. Do you see any additions or corrections please?
Motion by Moore.
I'll second.
Second by Rick to approve the minutes, October fifth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried. Will the only guy in the public that's on an agenda would like to speak. All right, Diana, I think you get to be first speaker.
No, I'm going.
You can come down and sit if you'd like.
Oh, well, I just wanted to come once because our report does look different than what you guys are used to looking at. We're using a solutions accounting program and we really like it. I'm sure that the auditors will like it too when they look over our numbers. The first sheet, and you guys.
I don't have it.
You can get a copy?
I don't have it.
Well, you can have mine.
Yeah.
Mine has scribbles on it, but there you go.
It's what you're used to, but I didn't give them the ones that.
Oh, okay. And I can certainly make some copies. The first sheet, the total is a forty-three thousand is a total of state and county dollars for the quarter. All those accounts that begin with the four thousand numbers, those are county money. And the categories without a number in front of it, those are state dollars. And the subtotal groups are divided by our categories. So you've got recording fees on the top, and then you've got DNR, vitals, and then the transfer tax. And the second report really isn't needed, but I like it because it breaks down and just shows the county dollars. So if you look at the two reports together, you'll see that of the forty-four thousand total dollars, eighteen thousand is county money. Also, I pay out our fees at the end of every month, not at the end of every quarter. So you'll receive, you'll get every quarter. We'll have three receipts on them. But that's really all I have. If you guys have any questions.
Eighteen three seven seven is actually more than a collection.
Yep, that's all county dollars for the quarter. And those are included in that first report, but if you check, it's kind of hard to look at that first report and see what is just county dollars.
Are the revenues running about the same as from your staff?
Yeah, they're pretty consistent, yeah. Yeah.
Anybody got any questions for Diane? Things under control over there, right?
Yeah, yeah. Going good. Very happy over there, so thank you guys.
To set and place on file report with Bruce?
I'll second.
Second by Rick to place on file reports ending in September thirty.
And I will come for future quarters, so if you have any questions, you don't want to find me, I guess.
Other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Thank you. All right. Yes. All right. Okay. We're a little bit ahead down the esplanade. We do authorize Rick to sign and change order number three for Humboldt Law enforcement for eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Tell us about that, Rick.
It's next seven thousand seven hundred dollars. It's mostly data ports that they've added in the older part of the building. That wasn't part of the original.
Those are all yours to sign. All three copies, they all have to go back.
No, no one has to sign it with page, right?
No, just we're set, sign here.
Those are the same.
This is, I guess that's not the same word. I guess I didn't copy that one. I thought I did.
Those were items that determined necessary that we didn't have as original specs, right?
Yes, yes, they weren't in original specs. You know, originally, we weren't going so deep into the building, but we pretty well went all the way to the U.C. wall. And we put all of everything in, wiring especially, because it was so, such a mess in there.
Did you drive by the roof? It looks like it's coming pretty good. Only been in there once, so you may end up every day.
Not every day, but they're putting rock on and stuff. So when you get inside, it looks a lot bigger than the outside because I don't know why. It looks small from the outside, but it maybe it's because it's up against a big building.
We have a contractor on board watching. Okay, are there any questions?
We said it's something that was something.
Yeah, but the majority of it was data ports, is what I'm saying.
But the amount will be.
Yes, yeah, there's a few other things. There's patching some of these cold air returns that were underneath the floor. They're filling, pumping in full of stuff to get air zone because the bridge needs the cold air, I don't know, the heat one, almost the cold air returns. Like the cold air returns underneath the floor. And now they're going to be at the bell and different, different items.
We need a motion to Woodworth approval of Rick to sign a change order number three for eighty-nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor, motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried. I think we got time for one other. We had to amend the gym, the gym to here this morning to approve AS number four, the Woodworth Evans for LEC work completed. And that's the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Is that right, Peggy?
Yes.
Things they've already gotten done, money we owe.
Work is done, material is sitting on the site. Engineer goes through that, verifies all that. So it's, you know, based on the percentage of this work being done.
So where they own, they're fifty or they're above fifty?
I think they're above, slightly above fifty. I'd have to sit and add the numbers up.
Well, that's fine. I just was wondering if.
I'm not sure if she's still being able to hear whatever.
But I think they're taking them to November.
Being supposed to be in done.
Fifty-three point seventy-five, it looks like.
Fifty-three.
You're here, motion to approve the AS number four.
So.
Second by Moore to pay pass for number four, the Woodworth Construction for LEC work completed in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and some pennies.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried. Have you had a chance to review the claims?
I don't think we did.
There's a hand written with two ninety-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six cents. And the bridge was four hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and forty million dollars and seventeen cents. Would you have two ninety-four, eight oh three, three five six?
And that includes the one hundred and forty-one thousand from just AS also, so.
Is that in the form of the motion, Moore?
Yeah.
Okay, you're here, second.
I'll second.
Second by Rick to approve the claims as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried.
We need to get the combine guy on the phone so we can get his name in a minute to couple of times make the call.
I thought you were sick. Okay, moving along a little bit here, we had a courthouse security meeting the other day, a second meeting, and one of the proposals came up was Peggy, I let you talk about the panic button. You're hiding all of this.
Apparently, we just have panic buttons in certain places, mostly counters. Employees would feel more comfortable if they had them at their desk. So they asked me if I would get some quotes from Modern Sound. That's our place that we got originally got the panic buttons from, so there were two quotes that they submitted. We called them back afterwards because the committee was concerned, you know, why are they different? And according to Dan, one is considered a barred system and the other is a wireless system. And so the wireless system is actually cheaper and the barred system is a little more, about a thousand dollars more. But I will pass those around if you are interested. That was one of the main things that the committee thought they could do fairly and efficiently to get some better security. I did pull out the courthouse budget sheet and of course, we have the waterproofing, which you've already approved, and the panic buttons, and would still have a little over a hundred thousand dollars left in the courthouse account to cover everything else.
This was really a discussion that did with here just to be plus one representative from each of the courthouse offices. That's one of the things they really harked on a long time is the need to get these. And I believe the consensus was the hard wire rather than wireless. You don't walk away with that feeling.
The wireless is like a button you carry with you. So the hard wire would be at the desk. And the problem right now is if you look at the auditor's office, treasurer's office, recorder, and assessor, if someone comes into the counter and is really, really upset, which we're all experienced, it's like you have to walk back to your desk. You have to come up to the counter and approach them to hit the panic button. There are no panic buttons at any of these ladies' desks. And one of the things that they will tell you in a situation where you have someone really, really angry, don't advance towards them. Don't go off them. If you have to be that mad, you don't want to get within two feet of them, which is how close you have to get to hit the panic button. So it would be, and I think especially right here where you can have people upset with, and not anybody's going to do anything, but people upset with drainage, people in the auditor's office upset, and people in the treasurer's office upset. I think, and then the treasurer's office also the only people who find out that they can't get a driver's license and they can't register their cars. And I think they'll leave a really good point about leaving at their desk so they don't have to get up and go somewhere. And if you look, the auditor's office, all the offices, everyone's basically trapped inside. No one's probably going out through the vaults in the treasurer's office, in the auditor's office, you'd have to come up and basically just close to somebody to get out the door. So everybody's kind of stuck in their office. The panic buttons, I think, would be something that would be very useful and at least make people feel a little bit better about what can happen if there's somebody angry, but maybe be more than angry.
We've been at this seminar, I thought there was panic buttons for in here. Nobody's had buttons by your desk, I think you should. They're pretty common. They aren't seen in the past, but they're not been volatile situations, so it provides it with, but I think any of you should be a little touchy about that law enforcement now, Nick.
Well, you're done with it. Regardless of issues that I'm here, I think it's depending whether it's somebody, you know, the courthouse attorney and that. Many times, we don't discuss here publicly what kinds of things we're talking about because the bad guys, we should let them know. The reason it's coming to the board is because it's expenditure money. We need your information to spend the money. There are a lot of other things we talk about, but I don't think we're supposed to talk about things like that publicly. The panic buttons was something that's going to cost us some money and I think is probably pretty, pretty important. John, you have the nail on the head. Whether we want the wireless or the.
The wired.
The wired. Peggy, you said the wired because it doesn't interfere with your computer, right?
Um, yeah, it wouldn't. I mean, wireless is probably your future, but.
You don't have to worry about finding the button. I doubt everybody can win with a button. So most of the time, you put it either on your desk or in your desk. It would carry around with you. So.
Yeah, like with the remote, the television.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sometimes it's not that the person's going to do something violent, it's just that they're so upset that, you know, nobody can say, oh, well, since you're upset, we can take ten thousand dollars off your bill or fifty thousand. It would be nice, you know, if someone's loud and disturbing the entire courthouse to be able to hit the panic button and have somebody come and at least help calm them down. I don't think it's necessarily the violent reaction, it's the somebody's so angry and you cannot calm them down. And unfortunately, all the employees are in a situation where they're going to keep giving them bad news. So it would be, and rather than have the angry customer willing to someone call nine one one and say, we have somebody very upset in front in the auditor's office, it's nicer just to hit something and have somebody come.
We have had a few situations where we've had to telephone, we're getting nowhere. This isn't accomplishing anything. We need to leave, I think, and come back here at a time. And it's very hard doing that with somebody because you want to help them, you want to answer their questions. And we do, we answer everything they ask for. But when they're that mad, there's just no discussing it with them.
Yeah, we've had a very, the second floor for quarter, we had law enforcement calm some people down and nicely helped them out of the door. Not, we asked them to leave and kind of follow them out. We had some pretty angry people up there. They were really violent. They were just loud.
Yeah.
And angry to them. The sound carries really well, so it was nice to have them up there to take the people calm down much faster than they would have had one of us at eighty if we'd calmed them down.
So what's the timeframe on, I mean, if you call the builder, will you interest in timeframe for the installation?
I guess I've never asked him that. I was so intent on getting the proposals from my business, how long would it take to get up here and do it? Good question.
Probably get a lot of good questions with the different areas. How many do we have? Every office we got at least one now.
Yeah, and then these would be additional.
Eighteen forty-one.
Yeah.
That's a great, but.
Up or down, we were trying to estimate what people would want to put them at. Let's say get to an actual office, someone may say, hey, I lucked another one, you know, back in this office also, and we can add it all.
We're talking about eighty-seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents to Modern Sound to go through with the proposal that we came up with. Does that sound acceptable?
Well, it sounds pretty reasonable. You're talking forty-nine in the distance, I got a lot of money proof.
Yeah.
Button, it reminds me of what, once you get the brains of the system put in, it's going to be fairly cheap down the other part of the button.
Because we already have a system, but I think that they are upgrading.
Is it tying? I was going to tie it into the old system and do it there.
The panel has the ability to take one hundred twenty-eight zones with the addition of expanders, so they're adding some expanders to it. Two of them.
I think it's a good idea. My opinion.
Want to put that in motion?
I'll put it in motion. I think we should possibly look at the hardwired system.
You're here, second.
I'll second.
Your motion is second to go with a quote from Modern Sound for eighty-seven hundred forty-seven dollars, eight thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for additional panic buttons. Other discussion.
We will probably be looking in next year's budget when we start the budget process in January of adding some additional items to that. Hopefully by then, I'll have some quotes on some of the other items we discussed and we can go over that in the next session so you'll have an idea of what those possibly be and see if you want to get that in.
I'll get my, I'll come out and do the courthouse maintenance.
Mm-hmm. House maintenance.
Other discussion. Those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried. Peggy, accept to place on file auditor's quarter report, report ending September thirty.
You bet. We've got some copy fees this time, passports, maps and plaques, and then about a thousand dollars in this money of postage. NACO reimbursed me for my trip to North Carolina, so I put that back in the county district town dinner, it paid me twelve. This is reimbursement for that. Fat fee and some interest, so a total of one thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and two cents for the quarter.
I'd like a motion to accept and place on file auditor's quarter report, report ending September thirty.
Motion by Rick.
Second.
Second by Moore to approve the auditor's report, ending September thirty. Other discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion is carried. I think that's it. We're ready for Mr. Jacob from the center. Paul?
We have five mine here, but you can walk us through that. It's mostly administrative, some BS. Good morning. The first one is to approve application of construction on County Right Way in request for fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement from Wright-Solace, dating ink for Darrell Rusher for a tile cross in just east of Virginia Avenue on one twentieth street. Some of you might remember that a year ago, about in December, we approved a similar request from a different contractor. Very much the same with the new contractor. I have proof of insurance. I already had the signed agreement from the Downstream Propaganda from a year ago. I have county attorney's addendum for construction on County Right Way, signed by the Wright Solace. Everything's in order, but I am running it through because it is a different contractor.
Okay. I'd like the motion for you signing the, what's the last guy? Fifteen dollars. Fifteen dollars. Second. Second by Bruce.
We did note on his, he was unaware of the ninety foot east of the center line that we had out of a year ago, and he hadn't noticed what the outlet looks like. He agrees to move it over. It gets it out of the riprap, the box culvert and everything, so he's in agreement with that.
Other discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post nay. Motion carried.
That's one. Now we roll into agreements with federal aid. The second one, the first one is approve Iowa Department of Transportation federal aid agreement for county highway bridge program project, project number BRS, pairing sixty-one eight G forty-six for bridge to box on one tenth between five and eight of Humboldt Township. It's up there, just east of Divine Bridge. That's our VR structure for next summer. We're looking at putting in a sizable box culvert in there. But with that comes the federal aid agreements that we need, not only the chair signatures, but also the auditor signatures.
Can we get that money by completion or by review?
Uh, we can do it in installments. We generally complete the project. I like to go all the way through the DOT's reviews so that the dollars and cents are right, and then we seek eighty percent reimbursement, refront it and get eighty percent back.
There's two crossing, just in place.
It's just west of Randy and Debberly's on the bottom. It's in that, it's a natural stream, but it's a drainage district that ends up just west of the river and there's parallels across there. It's the, then you go up over the hill and you'd be going down to Divine Bridge to your fishing homes, so you won't tell anybody where you fish.
Right. I don't even think it runs also.
It would be, Humboldt Township would be, it's twenty-seven.
Sixty-five and eight, yeah, there's two, two.
Well, the second one's over there then. Second one's Divine Bridge on the river and just east of that is this little structure that diagonals to the northeast.
Okay, you're here. You'd like to carry approve the Iowa DOT approval for federal grant, federal aid and bridge project.
I'll move.
Second by Bruce.
Second.
Second by Moore. Those approving an application with Department of Transportation for federal aid agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried.
This is both chair and auditor. These are, you gotta have all kinds of paperwork with federal aid, boy, bless their hearts. The second one. Approve Iowa Department Federal Aid Agreement for Surface Transportation Program Project. It's an STPS, pairing sixty-seven five E forty-six for resurfacing their C twenty-six from Highway one sixty-nine to State's Avenue. And I don't think that we've done this and yet, that's why it's in there. It's, this is for next summer's paving project and.
That will go over by Hardy?
Yeah, well, no, this just goes to State. It's that first part from Hardy to State is going over there, but.
Yeah, I'll go over there.
The FM part of it will go right to the north south blacktop at Hardy on Utah. But the federal aid portion of this comes from State's Avenue and runs west to one sixty-nine. Two Foster Bridge across.
Foster Bridge, isn't it?
Yeah, we're looking at, no approaches on the bridge at that point.
Okay.
And probably paving the shoulders in the bottom at the river will be all of the things that we talked about. It's going to be just, other than those two items, it would be a normal resurfacing project for us.
That's one we haven't done for BGA.
Oh, yeah, no, this federal aid stuff all goes through, through the DOT, yes.
Okay. I'll make that one. A lot of stuff there. We have motion by Rick.
Second.
Second by Bruce to approve the resurfacing project on C twenty-six. Other discussion?
I mean, this is, I'll talk about this afterwards.
The other discussion is we, I was thinking, what we've already approved on this, we had to approve this project when we put it in the step, right, and that was three years ago or whatever. So now, yeah, now the funding portion of it is what you're approving here. This would not be funded by the county. This would all be administered through the DOT with vouchers. Remember, we come in with approved units complete as opposed to doubt. When this project starts, that's what will happen.
Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carried.
Question I have. On the end of the, east of this road where it ties into State's, that little bridge just north there, we're going to try to get a box.
Someday, and what we're not doing with this project is putting forty-two thousand dollars worth of guardrails or whatever on that existing bridge. And we're going to design exception it out because we plan within the near term to replace the structure. There's no use to put guardrails on this thing.
That you're going to take out someday.
That we'll take out.
Okay.
The bridge, look at it, you'd say, wow, we should replace it. Unfortunately, if you look at its sufficiency rating and ratings what the DOT thinks it is, they think it's a valuable structure. So, and that's why sufficiency rating is part of an indicator as to how bad the bridge is or good it is. It should be replaced, and I think we need to get it out in five years. The other two bridges, while you bring up the bridges, there is, it's not even a bridge. It's the first one west of State's that's short enough, it's not a bridge. That has got guardrails that was put in and will leave that alone with this paving, the same way with the Foster Bridge itself. The guardrail installed with the bridge in ninety-one. We have no accident history and things, so we'll design exception those out. We're not going to pull them off and upgrade them.
Okay, we're going to stay the same.
Yeah, there's no point. It's because guardrail standards change about three times every year. So if you had to update the guardrail every time you built a bridge or a box or a pavement, you'd be redoing it every time.
Yeah. There's no other structures on this road, is there? What do you worry about down the road? I'm going to cut them out and redo it.
Oh, yeah, those are the structures. The one that holds up well, the FM portion of it is right west of Hardy, just a mile west, there's a narrow bottom.
But I'm talking about the one that we're going to pave.
Right, right. That would be paved also, and we've looked at that numerous times. If anything will add to it, it's one of my, this is against my better judgment, we'll probably.
Yeah. There's no other structures on this road, is there, to worry about down the road, having to cut them out and redo it?
Oh, yeah, there's other structures. Um, the one that, uh, holds up well, the FM portion of it is, uh, right west of Hardy, just a mile west, there's a narrow box.
Oh, but I'm talking about the one that we, we're not paved.
Right, right, that, that would be paved also, and we've looked at that numerous times, if anything will add to it, it's, uh, um, one of my, uh, this is, against my better judgment, I, we'll probably just add to it, because the concrete looks perfect underneath it, and, and just add some sections and whiten, because it's narrow. Uh, otherwise, uh, you get clear on the west end of this project, just hundreds of feet off our one sixty-nine is another box, it's a narrow box. Uh, much, very similar nineteen twenties vision, uh, vintage, lightened once or twice, so that is one that will get replaced someday, but it isn't on the horizon yet at this point. Yes, there'll be some where we're cutting that road up and putting them in, but, uh...
Not in the near future.
Not in the near future. Uh, moving on, we have approved voucher number two to Progressive Structures for work completed on LC one nine two three eight oh. Uh, and that, uh, is our Chantlin box. Uh, we had most of it, uh, last time. I believe this will be, uh, other than retaining, uh, this will be, uh, be complete in place here, with a total project coming out at, uh, eighty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. But total due now with voucher number two is seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety cents.
We got about twenty-five hundred left to regain.
Yep, we have three percent out there.
The entertaining motion for approval of voucher number two to Progressive Structures.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Rick?
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Bruce?
Yep.
Other discussion on approval of voucher number two to Progressive Structures? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Both nay? Motion carried.
The last one is a little cleanup of it. It's approved voucher number six to Rognus Brothers Excavating for works completed on projects, uh, thirty-seven nineteen ninety, twenty-eight twenty-nine oh nine, and thirty-nine oh two sixty-four. Really, uh, we held a thousand dollars and one cent, it was supposed to be a thousand, but the math somewhere along the line turned it into a thousand dollars and one cents. On some work here, um, in the middle, the twenty-eight twenty-nine oh nine, uh, they had leveled, they had to level some spoil that was so sloppy and wet last fall, they just left it in a pile. And we completed them entirely in the middle of winter, and then just retained a thousand dollars for them to come back and knock it down. And they did that here a month and a half ago, after they were in Webster County on the way through, they knocked it down, and thus will be done and complete with them.
Indication on that one.
That's indication that this was the three projects that were done late November, early December last year.
Probably just settling on any boxes.
Settling on the one up in, uh, up in your brother's neck of the woods was, uh, I wouldn't say severe, but it was soft. They did the best they could, uh, they actually came back up again and shaped some, and did some work on it, because they drove it themselves and didn't like it, and said, we're coming in, so, uh, even though we don't...